Okay, everybody, we're going to start with the public hearing. Today, Tuesday, June 11th at 5:15 PM. The Passaic County Board of County Commissioners are located at Passaic County Community College, Passaic Academic Center, 2 Polisson Avenue, Passaic, New Jersey, 07055.
Announcement of the public hearing. This public hearing is being held to solicit comments from the public on the intention of the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Passaic to release rights of reverter held by the county on properties located 84, 86, Ballburn Street, and 168-170 Fair Street in the city of Patterson. In February of 1993, the county transferred the two properties to the Fourth Ward Alliance, Incorporated, a nonprofit corporation for the purpose of operating a community center and set properties. The county can retain a right of reverter to take the properties back in the event that some said properties were no longer used as community center or if the Fourth Ward Alliance lost its nonprofit status. Thereafter, the Fourth Ward Alliance lost its nonprofit status and substantially lost the property, uh, sub- subsequently lost the properties through the tax sale foreclosure after failing to pay property taxes. Because the properties were obtained by third part, uh, third parties through tax sale foreclosure, the county would be required to pay back taxes in order to exercise its right of reverter of, as to the properties. The current owners are, are in the process of redeveloping the properties for residential use. The public is invited to participate in the public hearing and offer comments and/or provide written comment on the, this proposed release of rights of reverter. The period of the public to provide such comment will commence upon receipt of this notice and shall remain open until two weeks after the last public hearing, which will be the close of business on June 24th, I mean, 25th, 2024. The time, date, and location of this public hearing was advertised in both the Herald News and the Record on May 28th and June 4th.
Can I have an announcement of the public hearing? Roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Gallo?
Here.
James? Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Here.
Director Bartlet?
Do you have a motion to open the public hearing?
Make that motion, second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Uh, Director Lazara, the Deputy Director Lazara?
Does anyone present desire to be heard on this public hearing?
Seeing no one at the podium, I move the closing of the public hearing. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
And we have a motion to adjourn.
We're going to have another public, uh, speaking part later on in the agenda. This was just specifically for this one item.
If we have a motion?
I'll have a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion, second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Second. Okay. Welcome to the June 11th, 2024 County of Passaic Board of County Commissioners Regular Meeting. We're going to open up with a roll call.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Here.
Duffy?
Here.
Gallo?
Here.
James? Lepore? Deputy Director Lazara?
Here.
Director Bartlet?
And can we have an announcement of the open public meeting law?
Ladies and gentlemen, the notice requirement of the open public meetings law has been satisfied with respect to this meeting specifying the time, date, and location, including a annual notice adopted a reorganization meeting filed with the county clerk and posted in administration building and mailed to two newspapers in accordance with the provisions of the law.
And stand with the pledge of allegiance.
Use the folding chair if you want. I'll walk up again, let her hear. Ready? Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with every deed and justice.
Roll call. I'd like to invite Father Ryan up to the invocation.
On the way in, two people called me Father Murray. I don't know who he is, but I'll take it. We pray, gracious and holy Father, please give us intellect to understand you, reason to discern you, diligence to seek you, wisdom to find you, a spirit to know you, a heart to meditate upon you, ears to hear you, eyes to see you, tongue to proclaim you, a way of life pleasing to you, patience to wait for you, perseverance to look for you. Grant me a perfect end, your holy presence, and a blessed resurrection and life everlasting. Amen. And we remember all those men on D-Day who lost their lives really protecting our country in the name of the Father, of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Thank you, Father Ryan. There were moments of silence to remember all the men and women who have died in the war serving the United States, armed forces, and all those who have died from COVID-19, especially the 2,300 residents of Passaic. Okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes of May 21st, 2024.
Sylvia, second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
Okay. You have a motion for the approval of a proclamation for when you require her steps down as the CEO of Toys and Holes for Patterson.
Make that motion, second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazara?
Yes.
And now I will open this meeting up to our county administrator, Matt Jordan.
Thank you, Director. First, I'm going to call Dr. Rose, the president of the Passaic County Community College, to give us a little introduction. Dr. Rose?
Well, welcome. We, we have been on this campus since 2008, and this is the first time we have had a Commissioner meeting here. And we, I think we've had them on every one of our other campuses, but not here. So what took you so long? We're, we're, we're really happy you're here. Just, just a brief introduction, this is our, really our, primarily our health science campus. Uh, we have our nursing program, which is housed here. We also house the LPN program from PCTI is also housed on this campus. Downstairs, if you happen to take a look on your way out, we've just built three operating rooms. Actually, I showed that a few, a little while ago, we have three operating rooms where we're teaching surgical tech. Big, big need in the hospitals for that. We have medical assisting on this campus, and we also do dialysis tech on this campus. We were very fortunate recently to get a $10 million grant from the state, so reporting out there, we're going to build a building out here on this parking lot, a $10 million health science building. And one of the things that we're hopefully going to be able to put out here is a dental hygiene, dental assisting program. Because we can tell there is a big need from dentists in this area, that there's a big shortage of dental assistants and dental hygienists, so we're looking at that. And we're also looking at ultrasound technology, which is also a big need in doctors' offices these days. So, you know, we're trying to keep up and putting people out there, and as always, we thank you for your support.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Rose. Next, I'm going to call up Mayor Hector Laura, the mayor of the city of Passaic, talk about the wonderful partnership that the city and candidate have had together, which I would attribute to you, going back to your time as a freeholder and now mayor. It's, it's, we truly done a lot of great things together, so Mayor.
Mr. Administrator, you're very generous. I appreciate that very much. To all of the commissioners, thank you for all the hard work that you do. Welcome back to the city of Passaic. I say welcome back because you are often here in support of our community. Briefly before I go into some of the partnerships and collaborative efforts that we've been able to push forward, together as a community, they are benefiting, not just the residents of Passaic, but all those around our city that come and visit, work, or, uh, visit family. But quickly, Dr. Rose, I am so excited, so proud of the work and effort of all the commissioners, including Commissioner Lepore, who's walking in right now. Commissioner Will Paul, for dramatic effect.
Thank you.
Again, we're so proud of receiving this $10 million to have this brand new building to focus on careers and opportunities for individuals throughout our entire county and beyond, especially in areas of great need in our city and throughout our state, and I would propose throughout the nation. I think it's going to position so many young people in an ideal place for success and help them contribute back. Throughout the years here in the city of Passaic, we have benefited greatly from the relationships with the county. I have often heard individuals, thank you for your support. I want to take it a few steps further and say thank you for your leadership, your proactive leadership and your vision in terms of investing in every municipality representing 16 municipalities, over 500,000 residents, but considering that every square mile of this county is important in your investment from up county to mid-county to down county, and it's made such a difference, not just in education, not just in infrastructure, not just in services, but I would go further and say, touching the hearts of those you serve. I am reminded of your contributions throughout the pandemic, of seeing commissioners out here distributing food, concerned to ensure that everyone had access to every medical resource available and all the information, fighting so hard to ensure that our county received every dollar possible to get us through, to help small businesses, your willingness to facilitate and support small businesses while they were struggling, whether it was outdoor eating on our main avenues and county roads, or assisting them with any additional funds made all the difference to this day as mayor. I still speak to business owners who express their gratitude and appreciation to the efforts of the county during the most difficult time. I just put down some notes to share a few of the services. If I spoke of everything that the county does, we would be here or do, or we would be here all evening, but I want to talk about some of the services, beginning with our amazing Department of Senior Services. Over 22,467 meals have been delivered to homebound seniors through the Meals on Meals program from January 1st, 2023 to April of this year. Over 9,900 paratransit rides for seniors through the Paratransit Division have been given from January 1st, 2023 until April of this year. Over 10,900 Passaic seniors have visited the senior congregant site run by the Nutrition Division from January 1st until April of 2024. Now, these stats, they, they may seem impactful, but allow me just to put a little bit of a human face on them. When we talk about these thousands of seniors, they're not just numbers. These are individuals that receive wellness checks. When they receive a meal, sometimes this is the only contact they receive with a person throughout the week, the only time that someone's going to knock on the door, make sure they're okay. I've had family members call me from other states expressing their gratitude and saying, please tell the county how much we appreciate this service, because they may not be able to reach their senior loved one as many times as they would want to, but to know that there's someone consistently going, providing food, checking on them, giving them rides, whether it's going to be to a medical appointment or to a great recreation opportunity with other seniors, it makes all of the difference. So I want to thank you for that, obviously, and I want to thank you for the investments in our parks, especially through the recreation departments partnering with the city of Passaic. We've had educational programs with our park rangers exposing our youth to nature, to the importance of preserving the environment, to understanding the difference between investing in infrastructure and looking towards the future, investing in green infrastructure while we preserve our open space and also look to mitigate flooding concerns as well as expand recreation opportunities for our city. One of the biggest projects, and I want to take this opportunity to highlight our administrator, Matt Jordan. This was his vision, something that he was so personally closely involved in, a $12 million partnership that resulted in grants making Dundee Island Park the very first new park in Passaic County's park system since the 1970s, the year that Commissioner Lepore was born. And that was an amazing accomplishment. Taking it late, I have like two more jokes. I'll try to work them in in the middle of this. The very first ever riverfront park, but what this park truly meant in our most densely populated area of the city, an area where young people grow up basically staring at brick and mortar all day and not seeing beautiful trees, or being able to enjoy a riverfront view, or maybe go kayaking, or fishing, or enjoying a splash park, or a wonderful soccer field, or inclusive play through recreation that encourages those who are often referred to as neurotypical, neurodivergent, or special needs children playing together, as we often share, that if you close your eyes and go to the park, you're not going to be able to distinguish between the laughter of someone who may have a disability, or maybe special needs, or other children. They're just playing together, and children that grow up enjoying recreation together grow up more empathetic to each other, which greatly reduces the instances of bullying in high school and older. And we thank you so much because that investment in that park, it not only made a remarkable aesthetic difference in our city, it exposed our children to something that otherwise perhaps they would not have, and that opens up new horizons. It gives them a different perspective and, dare I say, even prompts them to dream bigger, to say, if this is possible here, what else is possible outside of Passaic? And they may dream to go and do something wonderful and come back to invest. And I want to thank the commissioners because you are directly responsible, because of your commitment, your responsible stewardship of the finances and grants that come through the county government, you're making differences and change lives every single day. I also want to share that our Dundee Island Phase Two project is set to break ground this year, as $12 million was not enough connecting our Pulaski Park and our Dundee Island. These renovations to our North Pulaski Park will incorporate so many new amenities like riverfront walks, a new parking amenity to allow for even more usage of the park, bike lanes, and even additional programming for our children. So again, we're so very excited. With the rehabilitation of the freight rail bridge to provide a pedestrian connection across the Passaic River, we are now partnering with our friends in Bergen County. And as mayor, I get to say, hey, check us out over here. I think we're getting more usage from those in Bergen County even than from Passaic. They're so excited about the park, and I think that's the very best about the county when we create opportunities that bring communities together, whether in our county or in neighboring municipalities and other counties. So again, I'm so very thankful. To the engineering department, I want to thank you for the replacement of the Ace Street Bridge, the replacement of the Pennington Avenue Culver, the drainage improvements on Passaic Avenue, the resurfacing of county roads, Passaic Avenue, Turk Hune, Lexington Avenue, Sherman Street, Harrison Street, Lakeview Avenue, Southbound Lane, Marcus Street to Crook's Ave, and so much more. Allow me to talk a little bit about our business district, our central business district and our main avenue redevelopment plan. Our main avenue is the heart of the Passaic Business District with new businesses, new constructions, additional mixed use, and retail for residential sites, retail on the bottom, residential on the top, and most recently, additional schools that have been placed in our main avenue throughout the years. The main avenue redesign with the county and the NJTPA, I believe the representative is still Director Bartlet, Director Bartlet, who worked so very hard in that role, and I know it's a, it's a labor of passion for him. This new redesign has come to fruition, and it would eventually remove 67 parking spaces, which doesn't sound like good news, but we don't stop there. It would be converted into a beautiful promenade with reverse angle parking, bike lanes, seating, and green space allowing for passive recreation, which is so important in urban communities like ours for individuals, whether our seniors or our children, especially during our commercial district as they go down to get some food or shop just to sit and enjoy. Our main avenue is exciting, but also working with the county and especially highlighting these partnerships, we were able to secure an additional $10 million. I don't know if that's the same $10 million, Dr. Rose, ever. It's a different one. We're not competing. We're going, we're going for all the different parts, but an additional $10 million to create a 300-space parking deck on Main Avenue, right by our county road to add parking space, and encourage more visits and more individuals to come to our commercial district. So we're extremely excited about that. We have a new state-of-the-art New Jersey Transit Bus Terminal, which is expected to be built in the area 2026. $6 million we received working with the county. This is a state-of-the-art bus terminal, which will let you know up to the second what time the bus is coming. So that will allow Commissioner Deputy Director Sandy Lazara to know exactly what time she has to get her coffee from Dunkin' Donuts. Did not get a Starbucks here, so we've agreed Passaic runs on Dunkin'. Fortunately, Deputy Director likes Dunkin' Donuts. But no, it's really exciting when we heard of all of the technological advances that are made. They're going to have this remarkable bus terminal where on your phone app, you can tell to the second what time the bus comes, you'll get updated information. We'll also have LED screens around that'll update you on county programs and different services that you can receive, so we're extremely excited about that. Continuing these enhancements will include brand new trash receptacles around the area, lighting upgrades, planters, benches, bike racks, street art on intersections in lane and bus stops, curb extensions, high-visibility crosswalk, and wayfinding signs. Our State Street and Hamilton redesign, Passaic has applied and was selected to receive technical assistance services from the NJTPA, another shout-out to Director Bartlet, and Sustainable Jersey's Complete Streets Technical Assistance Program. These agencies help to create conceptual designs and renderings to help visualize potential improvements to the streetscapes and design of the state and Hamilton area. The area chosen locating the census tract in which 80.4% of the population own no more than one vehicle, necessitating a dependence on alternative modes of transportation such as walking, cycling, or public transit. Right now, presently, as we meet here, we're having a virtual Bike Master Plan meeting with the county at City Hall. We have representatives from the county, as well as the DCA, local services are presenting with participation from our residents to find out how the county and the city will partner up to increase road space, to provide brand new bike lanes, and to add routes, not just for benefiting the city, but to connect throughout the county, including municipalities like Clifton, Patterson, and others. So we're so excited about this as well. I wanted to share that the selected area that we continue to speak about in terms of investment for public transit and expanding cycling opportunities is in close proximity to our Passaic City Hall. That's where our New Jersey Transit Bus Terminal will go, the new parking deck will go. We're also investing hundreds of millions of dollars in our Spear Village Passaic Housing Authority Building to add more affordable housing opportunities for residents, as well as when you consider that all of these initiatives work together, a parking deck, the brand new terminal, the investment in Main Avenue, the parks, especially that $12 million Dundee Island Park, an additional tens of millions of dollars that will enhance North Pulaski Park, all of this in our most densely populated area, you're going to see over the next 10 years, our east side will be completely transformed with a beautiful riverfront view right in front of Passaic River. And we've seen the investment of the county pay huge dividends as we're seeing more and more investors, developers, and business owners wanting to come to our city. And all of this difference has been made because this remarkable county board has decided to continue to partner with all of the municipalities. Now, I can speak about Passaic, but having been a former freeholder, they changed, I think it's such a bad job, they got rid of me when I left, but changed into Commissioner now. But having such a bad joke, but I do make it every time. Having traveled the county recently, I've seen what the commissioners have done throughout the entire county. We are truly blessed to have some of the most remarkable leaders representing us in Passaic County with the biggest hearts and the most sharpest or sharper minds that can apply your vision and your leadership to transform our municipalities. The enhancements that include sidewalk space, adding angled parking, removing median and turn lanes, two-way bike lanes, and adding benches and trees, these are all wonderful. The traffic lights, the infrastructure investment on the bridges, the roads are amazing, but allow me to speak and maybe conclude with something personal. During the most difficult times, whether it's a pandemic or extreme weather condition, there are those that are extremely vulnerable in our community. Those who deal with, with insecurity in terms of housing, those who are dealing with chronic homelessness or short-term homelessness, whether it's a lack of a job or extenuating circumstance, terminal illness that a family member face, and we sometimes find these individuals who are marginalized and without a voice. And the fact that you have chosen to use your platforms, your position, and amplify the voices of those that often go unheard, to speak up for them, to ensure that you're receiving additional funds, that you support municipalities, whether it's through a program like Dignity Housing Passaic, or investing in other municipalities so they can ensure when they do the point and count for, trying to identify how many homeless individuals that they have, that you connect them, or whether through 2-on-1 or human services, that they can get assistance, they can get temporary rental assistance, whether you're just facilitating opportunities for them to access funds on the state, you're making a huge difference. Your consistent dedication to Code Blues and Code Reds have forced municipalities to respond to the cries of those who are sometimes left out in the streets without help, and I thank you for that. So many lives have been saved. I share, and it's the most unfortunate thing that during these extreme weather conditions, whether it's a blizzard, whether it's extreme heat, or whether it's a storm, that lives are lost. But I can share that over the last few years, Passaic has not lost a single individual in the streets, not a single homeless person. They have been able to be sheltered, they've been able to be fed. We've been able to get over eight individuals off the street and into housing, whether connecting them through Veterans Services or utilizing some funds received from the county in order to create programs like the mailbox program, sometimes something as simple like that, to receive correspondence, connecting you to benefits that otherwise you didn't know you were entitled to, whether social security, veterans' benefits, makes all the difference. And these are the real tangible examples of how the county partnering up with municipalities is making a difference every day. Beyond that, in terms of education, you know, barring none, the standard of education that individuals are receiving at PCTI, or at Passaic County Community College continues to provide the state of New Jersey, and I would go as far as the nation, with some of the highest quality professionals, some of the brightest young minds that are truly changing the world. They are technologically advanced, much more than myself, a little less than Commissioner Duffy, but there, because he's the most technological on the board, maybe Commissioner Lando Cruz. But as I was sharing, that your investment means so much. And today, as we were having that meeting with the county, as I was talking to our business administrator, who has countless opportunities to meet with the administrator, Matt Jordan, whether he's advocating on behalf of the city against the state, I don't want to say against, but sometimes he has to fight and remind them that we need these funds and they make a difference, or whether he's fighting for all 16 municipalities, when you collectively come together, I would put this county board up against any board in the nation. Thank you so much for your efforts, your leadership, and all that you do for our city. Thank you. Questions?
Any questions, Commissioner? That's a tough act to follow.
I had so much. I tried to keep it a little bit brief, but you guys do so very much. Thank you so much.
You're right, there. I just want to know, thank you, Mayor, for taking your time, but I wanted to know how you came across my report, which included a lot of your talking points. So I thought, I was happy to.
I, I think, I do want to answer that. I think good work, good work is easy to identify. You don't have to dig too deep to find out what the county has been doing over the years and most recently. It's plain for the eye to see everywhere. Whether you start in Passaic, go through Clifton, Patterson, end up all the way to Ringwood and West Milford, you see the investment of this board. And if you would allow me to say this, I believe each and every one of you can hold your heads up high and be proud of the investments and the differences that you have made in the lives of children, families, seniors, and those with special needs throughout our entire county, especially those veterans. You have done so much for them, so thank you. The three minutes are up. in the lives of children, families, seniors and those with special needs throughout our entire county, especially those veterans, you have done so much for them, so thank you. The three minutes are up. Thank you. Thank you very much. I obviously have to thank all of the department heads and all of the staff in the county because I know that they are an extension of your vision and they're the ones that do the work every day. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Dr. Rose. You know, this facility is a testament to your leadership and it just continues to grow. You know, Mark commented, we're taking the tour, that you don't stop, and it's true, you don't stop, you just keep developing new programs to, you know, help educate people and build the workforce for tomorrow, so thank you for that. And with that, my report is concluded.
All right, we have commissioner reports. I just want to thank you, Dr. Rose. You know, this college touched my life personally with someone I love very much who immigrated here from another country and is now gainfully employed as a nurse and in demand. And the most important part of it is that she now can always have something to fall back on. She's never going to be left behind again. And that happens with so many children and below, who was at the graduation? Oh my gosh, amazing. Like you give people a chance. You give people the chance to make a life for themselves and support themselves and never have to worry again. And you can't put a price on that. It's so great. And the mayor talked about communities working together, and that's so huge because there's so many communities, you know what, we here at the county do work hard, do a good job. And I give a lot of this credit to the people sitting with you, Dr. Rose, everybody who's here tonight, and a lot of them are not here. But then, we make things happen, but we don't do it by ourselves. We do it on every level of government, we do it with education, we do it with our unions, we work hard and we make sure that we take care of people. So I'm just touched by what you had to say and what the mayor had to say and its partners like you that make things work, so thank you. Cruz? Duffy?
I have eight items on here, resolutions, I'm sure you've read, I'm sure you have all agreement on that. Thank you, Detective.
Commissioner Gallo?
Last October, we gave a proclamation to Domenico Campana. He was ninety-nine years old last year. June sixth of this year, just last Thursday, he turned a hundred. So I want to wish him happy birthday.
Thank you. And Commissioner LaPorte?
Yeah, I just want to acknowledge that the mayor did not answer my question. But either as a mayor, I have twenty resolutions on the agenda for your review and hopefully your support. Thank you.
Okay. Can I have a motion to open up the... Can I have a motion to open up the public portion of the meeting?
Make that motion. Second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes. Anyone wishing to be heard can come up to the podium. You have three minutes. Please state your name and address before you start speaking.
Hello, my name is Joseph J. Kowski. I'm a resident of Clifton on Mount Prospect Avenue. And I'm here to talk about Mount Prospect Avenue. I have some photos I want to share with all of you, if I can pass them around. If I could hold on to one. So I just want to say thank you for the opportunity. I'm a little bit out of my comfort zone, so forgive me for any nerves or any stuttering. But I'm here to talk about Mount Prospect Avenue because I'm concerned with the overall safety of the road. And I'm talking about it with you guys because it's a county road. So I know that gets a little complicated. I know the city of Clifton has responsibilities and I know the county has responsibilities for the road as well. I don't know if you guys are familiar, how familiar you are with the road, but it's a residential street, twenty-five miles per hour. There's a lot of speeding on the street. There's a lot of safety concerns that I and I think my fellow neighbors have from the design of the road. We have incomplete sidewalks, we have lack of drainage, lack of safe parking on the street, which is unsafe for vehicles and pedestrians and people parking their cars. The catalyst that brought me here was an accident that occurred in front of my home back in February. My partner's car was collided into by traffic. He was rightfully parked on the street. A car coming onward in excess of twenty-five miles per hour slammed into his car, pushed it many feet forward and turned it ninety degrees and his car actually landed in on driveway. You would think that's where he had parked it, but it was actually parked on the street. This was because that car that hit him, or his car I should say, because he wasn't in the car at the time, was traveling in well excess of the speed limit. The force and impact proved that several and his car was totaled and was a total loss. Several weeks later, there was another accident in front of my house, you know, people speeding by to the oncoming traffic. I've included photos of these accidents, I'm sure there's many more that's occurred over the years and over the weeks. I've included photos of, you know, the rain buildup and how that makes the street and the sidewalks unsafe because there's no drainage on the street. Included photos of incomplete sidewalks that forced pedestrians to walk, you know, I don't know, in the street. I've had to walk in the street as cars fly by, as I'm walking my dog, which feels pretty unsafe. These cars are forced to park on sidewalks because there isn't enough street parking. Also, this unsafe. And I know it's, you know, it can be difficult to raise these concerns and I spoke with a few people from the county, I've spoke with a few people from the city. The city has installed additional speed limit signs. And there's been additional police monitoring, but I, you know, that can only do so much. I feel like there's physical change that needs to happen on the street to help, you know, guide people to drive safer and make it a little bit more safer for pedestrians and the residents. You know, I know temporary speed limit signs can be put out, but I've seen that put, installed over the years and it doesn't seem to make much of a difference. I lived on the street for seven years and, you know, this accident that impacted me personally is what's driving me here. And the shame on me for not coming sooner. I hope, wish more people would speak up. And it's just kind of confusing because it is a county road and I know the county has responsibilities and the city has responsibilities. And like I said, I've talked to both sides and it just feels like both sides need to come together and kind of quickly come up with some permanent and positive change. And I'm happy to be a part of that. I just don't know how to bring the two together and, you know, force that change to happen. Sorry if I went over my three minutes.
I don't think anybody can type.
Okay.
Thank you.
I don't have anyone. Do you guys ask questions or not?
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes.
Director, I can, Joseph, I know we emailed and I know you've met with our county engineer. I know you've been told that, you know, we do have a, we've retained, the boards retained a consultant to look at improvements in Mount Prospect. We can certainly meet again and maybe we can arrange that in my office where you can come in and talk further about some of your concerns and we try and endeavor to make the road safer. Thank you for coming.
Thank you. Okay. So can I have, oh, does anyone want to pull anything from the agenda or anything? Anybody need executive session? Okay, we're good then. All right, the consent agenda, L one to L seventy-nine.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes. Uh, new business. Who wants to move the personnel?
I'm holding personnel. Second. It was LaPorte and then Duffy?
Gallo.
County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes.
Move the bills? Second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes. Have a motion to adjourn?
Make that motion. Second. County Commissioners Cruz?
Yes.
Duffy?
Yes.
Gallo?
Yes.
LaPorte?
Yes.
Deputy Director Lazaro?
Yes. Thank you, everyone.